So I would like to call to order the May 19th, 2022 special board meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake School Board. Mr. Tarnello, can you take a roll?
Mr. Boxler is not here today. Mr. Roskis?
Here.
Mr. Vettori?
Here.
Mrs. Mensah?
Here.
Mrs. Baer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. And then, we don't have it on the agenda as the pledge, so we just skip past it, right? Just making sure. It's not like I've never forgotten the pledge before, so I'm very hyper aware. Okay, we'll move on to item two, approval of the agenda from our May 9th board meeting, or no, approval of this agenda, May 19th meeting, sorry. Do I hear a motion to approve item 2A, approval of agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 2A, approval, May 19th of this agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. No discussion?
Actually, as I was looking at the agenda for, for the strategic plan discussions, thought maybe it would be beneficial to move that before A, the strategic planning committee lottery.
Oh.
So could we make a motion to amend, to move the order of those two items?
Okay, so, 4D strategic plan discussion moved before 4A strategic planning committee lottery?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can have any discussion before the lottery? It just made more sense to me, I don't know if everyone else knows.
What are your thoughts? Keep it as its change it?
I have no opinion one way or the other. We're gonna talk about any, all of them, right? So the order doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Then I'll take a motion, a second and a vote to amend the agenda.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to amend the agenda to move item 4D ahead of 4A?
I'll make a motion to amend to move item 4D ahead of 4A.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion. I'm fine either way, doesn't matter to me. So now we have to make a motion.
So we're voting on the amendment right now?
Yeah. So to amend, so do I hear a motion to vote to amend the agenda to approve the movement?
That's what they just, a motion seconded on.
Okay. So now we're approving the agenda that's been revised?
Now we have to do a vote on the amendment. So let's, we'll vote.
Thank you, Mr. Tarnello.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
4D is now 4A. So that is the new agenda that is up for approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for the May 19th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the May 19th meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay. So, let me go back. So we're there. Okay, so we now move on to item 3A, so board members' business board discussion. So this would be to essentially discuss anything that we needed to between meetings. I don't believe we have anything in board discussion. We just move on straight to the discussion regarding the strategic planning committee.
Correct.
Okay. I am a little discombobulated. So, since we don't have anything to discuss under board business, we'll move on to item 3B, board members' business recording of meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve item 3B?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 3B, recording of meetings.
Thank you, Ms.
What's the motion? Is it?
All right, there were two choices.
You've got two choices in there.
Oh, I thought we had to go to discussion before we could decide.
Um. You certainly need to discuss it before you vote. Well, I think that is why we had the board discussion first, was to discuss, and then you would.
Today's a meeting of many firsts. Okay, so let's go. But the motion has to include whether it's all or.
Or special.
Yeah.
Or it's, but all are regular.
We have a lot of new, unique things today. So, board discussion, one of the things that Dr. Thompson and I discussed in between meetings in advance of this one, which is why the item is on the agenda, is making a decision. Do we want all meetings recorded, regardless if they are regular or special? Or do we only want to record and, and post regular meetings? And, Dr. Thompson, you, you brought some really good points to the conversation when we spoke last time. And can you just high level some of the things that we reviewed?
You know, I, I understand the desire to want to audio record all meetings. All meetings are open to the public. So it's never not open to the public. But in, in work sessions where there's more free flowing conversation and there's more, a lot more emphasis on discussion, strategic planning, whether that's for a levy or for anything else, I, my preference and my recommendation, and we never have audio recorded and uploaded those types of conversations because, not because we're trying to not disclose anything to the community, but rather, things can get taken out of context, or work can get taken out of context. I, and it stifles our ability to sometimes discuss some of those very difficult things that a free flowing conversation allows for. So my, and we never have recorded all until COVID hit, anything. So COVID started the, the first, well, we had recorded regular meetings in the past, but never live streamed. And then, then live streaming came. And so the boards kind of oscillated back and forth, this board, the last board, in terms of what was in the public best interest, what's in the board's best interest, ultimately what's in the district's best interest. And obviously, that's what you have to decide tonight. But my recommendation would be that you video and upload regular meetings, but not work sessions or special meetings.
I think one of the other things that you had mentioned, just that was on top of mind when you were speaking, was also too, was the allocation of staff to come to the meetings when we have them, and, and coordinating the appropriate staff member to come to help with the technology.
Yeah. So, for example, Dave's here. Thank you, Dave. But what would you say our estimated cost is on audio and uploading?
Like, uh, what's Dave getting paid?
Basically, what's Dave getting paid?
Oh.
Dave probably knows better than we do, but it's somewhere, on average, they're gonna be somewhere in that, at time and a half, it's somewhere around $60 an hour. Been here since their shift ended at four o'clock. And then the time to upload, there's an expense associated with.
Sorry, Dave, I didn't want to divulge how much you make, but.
He's a very wealthy man. No, he's fairly paid. He's just, these guys do a lot of hours anyways. We're, we're struggling to keep them in a 40-hour work week as it is. So, it's just, I'm not saying it's a reason not to, but it's just something to consider. And then, of course, staff, additional staff at our meetings as well.
And then after Dr. Thompson and I spoke, he's, you know, we're like, what do you want to do? And I'm like, I want to take it to the board. I don't want to be a decision maker for any portion of our business or how we operate. So that's why I wanted it to ensure that it was on the agenda, so everybody could have an opinion, and we could just settle it, and then move forward for the remainder of the year with a plan. So, what, what are your thoughts? Before we move to the actual item?
I could not absolutely agree more. I totally agree. You'll get a yes out of me when you get the vote.
I see the wisdom in your reasoning.
Very happy for it, actually.
So, because I ha, I can't help myself, I guess, one of the things that kind of bred the conversation was specifically with regards to the levy committee, right? And why the district didn't communicate. That was all discussed in a special meeting in January. And on January 26th, we as a board in special, in a special meeting, were brought completely up to speed, but the community wasn't, which was kind of, that's why it made me hesitate to say, we shouldn't not record special meetings. Had that special meeting been recorded, that would have been a communication to the community that, what is barring us from being able to do what we've done in the past. So I think there's lots of valuable information in special meetings. I definitely see the points that Dr. Thompson made. And I also see a value in ensuring that our conversations and discussions are open for the community. You know, like tonight, like the lottery, or even, you know, committee. The things we'll discuss in regards to the November ballot are, are very important things for our community to know that would only have been discussed in a special meeting, and then made mention in a meeting minutes posted on our board website. So, I'm just thinking about where we are as a district right now, and being fiscally minded, I understand. I truly appreciate you for being here late on an evening to support us. I just also want to consider that side of the coin. So, those are my thoughts.
I see both sides. It's a tough call.
I, I guess one thing we could do to help mitigate, which we have done in the past, there can be options, you know, like we do check in with the soups. We can do hot topics, too. And I've done them with board presidents in the past. When we first went, when COVID first hit, we did a lot of videos, made a lot of videos, and even did some live streaming, if you recall, John, where we live streamed meetings, and they were fairly well attended. So I, I do agree, I think there's certainly wisdom in what you're saying. If there's an important topic that is discussed, after we discuss it, then we can succinctly put that together and put together good messaging to make sure people understand that. And I think we probably missed the ball, quite frankly, in not, in a January timeframe, making some type of video announcement or some kind of interactive communication with the community, so they would understand the position we found ourselves in.
Yeah.
And I think that probably would have been helpful to a degree. So I think if we are going to do this, we need to be cognizant and intentional in thinking about what communications do we want to put out on videos. And we have found that the best way to communicate is video or live streaming, check-ins. Those, those get pretty decent views, far more than we ever get in attendance at a board meeting.
How many, how many, what's the count that goes out when you send one out? Is it in the thousands?
In, with our COVID ones, they're in the thousands, especially when they were coming back to school. Check in with the soups, five, 600. So it just, it just, and it depends on the topic. If it's a mask thing, three, 4,000, when we were in that, in that. If it's controversial, obviously more people will tune in.
So if we vote to only record the regular meetings, then we can never record a special meeting? Or can we say, okay, well, this, this specific one must be recorded?
You can always put a resolution on the, on an agenda to lot, to, to either livestream, which you'd need to, to livestream, even a regular meeting, because this isn't, at least the agenda item as it's written does not say livestream. But you could always have an agenda item to add live streaming, or on Tuesday, we're having a special meeting to discuss why Terry Foreman comes to every single board meeting, and, you know, we're glad to have you, Terry. Then we could, we could livestream that, or audio that, or video that, whatever you choose, but you'd have to do a resolution to do that. Otherwise, it's just regular meetings and not specials or work sessions.
Okay. I like the idea of taking and debriefing special meetings to get content out to the community. And, and, and that is something that the, the board and administration would work on deciding on which content would be included in that. Okay. I think I'm okay with that. I think that was it. I just, I reflect back on, on the feedback that we're getting now as a board. And we did have an opportunity, and we did do our due diligence, and we did do it in reasonable timeframe, but we didn't provide evidence to the community, and we didn't allow them access to that information. So if we, I think if we can do those for special meetings, I also am comfortable with recording only just regular.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Tarnello, I don't want to mess up the rest of the night's agenda, so I'm now going to move on to the vote for this, correct? To go to item 3B?
Correct.
And I will state it's only for regular meetings?
Yes, you would state you need a motion for only regular board meetings to be recorded.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to item 3B, board members' business recording of meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution as stated with only regular meetings being recorded going forward and posted on the district's YouTube channel?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the recording of only regular board meetings on the YouTube channel.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Mensah, okay. So any other discussion about this before we take a vote? Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Okay.
Now, is Dave staying, or is Dave going?
Well, let's, did you want to do at least the?
We, we would prefer, if possible, for tonight, because we're kind of in purgatory, is to have the lottery recorded.
So why don't we record through the, through the lottery, and then, then Dave can go home, unless you prefer otherwise?
I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay. So, so you'll get to go home early, Dave?
Yay. Okay. So now, we are moving on to item 4A, which is strategic plan discussion. Okay. Do.
It's just, this is just discussion.
That's what I thought. I just didn't want to drop the ball again. So now we are in our strategic plan discussion portion of our meeting. So, Lawrence, I know that there were some things that were shared via email with regards to the strategic planning committee, and I would, I would love to have an opportunity to discuss those.
This is strategic plan or strategic planning committee?
It's the, it's about the committee.
Which is 4?
4D.
4D. We're doing 4D first. Move, but not reorder.
Yes. Yeah. So, and it is in regards to the, the committee itself.
Okay. Well, as I expressed in the email, I, I think that there's only so many resources in this community that are gonna have enough energy and commitment to do something when it relates to the levy. I think I had someone approach me, said, hey, I got this email about joining a strategic planning committee. Is that the one about the levy, so we can pass it? And I said, no, it's not that. It's another one. He goes, well, which one do you want me on? Sort of thing. I don't, and I'm looking at the names. Is this, is this the list of the people that signed up for the lottery?
Yes, minus five that were at kind of the last minute. They're in the lottery, but didn't have time to update the spreadsheet.
I mean, I recognize three names on this list, four. And these all would be great people on the levy committee, trying to pass the levy as opposed to identifying what to cut if it fails. I just think that if you, sends a message that we're okay with it failing in November, and we're looking to see what the cuts are gonna be. And if I had to choose to put energy into trying to pass it as opposed to identifying what to cut, I would choose trying to pass it with all the force and might that the committee can do, and not split the resources. Because, like, well, I can't, I won't name names, but one of these people put out a, a big video during the levy committee, and now is that person gonna be on the committee thinking he is going to support a cut? Or is he thinking that it's gonna be an opportunity to pass the levy? That's, that's my, might be, my hesitancy on that last week. And I thought about it further. And I, I will always assume positive intent with all of this, but I just, I think it's just a matter of time. For example, you had commissioned to put out the note when the levy failed, blasted it out, right, to how many people? Thousands of people? Everyone in the, uh, be in the district. One person showed with eight questions. That was it. So I think it sounds really great if there's 30 Krista Bears and Stacy Mentors out there, with all the energy in the world to do that, then we would have a lot more people than we do. We only had one person. So I'd rather have that person supporting the levy committee to pass it than to have it on a committee trying, whose charter is to figure out what to cut. And everyone's gonna be crabbing about, no, cut this, cut that, don't cut that. I want ban, no, I want football. I want Spanish. And I think those are all things that are going potentially be on the chopping block if we don't pass these levies. Eighty percent of the budget is labor and, and benefits. You can't chop off a part of the building, right? So people are gonna lose curriculum, people are gonna lose what makes the school district solid and thriving, in my opinion. So we should be focused on the levy, passing the levy full steam ahead, and not trying to have it such that we're looking for, well, if it could, if we don't pass it, these things are gonna get cut. Yeah, and the community will have its say. But at the end of the day, it's the guys that are running the business that make the ultimate decision, the union president, the staff, you know, the leaders, the superintendent, the board. And I just think it would get diluted, and it's gonna be a lot of cross talk, and I want mine, and none of yours. And I just, I hope I'm wrong. But I really want to focus on passing the levy. And if that's somehow embellished in here, then I just didn't see it, based on what little I saw at the time was presented. So, is that enough diatribe?
It was perfect.
So just from looking at the applications, now, we didn't ask how people voted, because we didn't, you can't do that. But inferring from what people wrote on the application, my, I have a concern after looking at it quickly before reading. This is just inference. It seems like almost all of them are for the levy. Now, we were trying to have diverse for no people, yes people, to bring everyone together. But if it's 99% all for levy, I feel like we're gonna be off balance a little bit. So that was a little concerning.
Well, I think, once again, that's, so Stacy and I have had an opportunity, just to kind of everybody know, the applications were submitted, because Stacy and I are the co-chairs for the committee, we asked it to be submitted to us. So we were able to see the, their information as well as their demographic. And then there was a little blurb that said, you know, what do you hope to achieve with this committee, just to give some insight. I will say, one thing that stood out to me is, almost everybody made mention to, they want to have a voice with regard to the finances in the district. And that was, something that I saw was resounding. By the way, we have all of these. I had them stored in a separate, I pulled them all and put them in a file, so we can print these and everything. But I don't necessarily know if that meant they were all for. Some of them said that we need to be more fiscally sound in our spending. So ultimately, after speaking with legal counsel, as, at the last meeting we said, speak to legal counsel, they advised to not put whether they were for or against the levy on the application, because we, we don't reserve the right to know. So, but ultimately, whether they're for or against, we're gonna be focusing on the finances of the district, where we currently stand, and in the event of a failure, what would have to change. So whether they're for or against it, the voters in, in the seven municipalities are gonna decide whether we have that money or not in November. It's who's gonna decide or have a voice in if changes occur, what those changes are. So.
If, assuming no community input, say levy fails, and one did, right? We haven't had one in a while, right? But it, there was one?
Uh, 2019.
2019. So what did, we cut stuff. All right. I remember, I remember talking about, was it the TPP, one pre, I don't know, one where I, my kid was on the football field, scored a touchdown, but there was no ban, because the ban couldn't travel to Mayfield, and which really, really sucked. And then eventually, the levy passed, and all extracurriculars were reinstated. Who made, who makes the decisions up till now without the community involvement? It's a decision made by?
The administration makes recommendations. We spend a great, you know, and I think that's, I think that's one of the challenges, not that it couldn't potentially be overcome, but one of the challenges this committee's gonna have is, they're all predominantly with one name I recognize in here is not, but they are all predominantly lay folks, led by laypeople in terms of not, in, in, in the educational field, and certainly don't work here. I think it's gonna be difficult to know what, know what to cut, where to cut it, what does it cut, what does this cut equal?
Are you able to cut it?
Are you able to cut it legally? What are state minimums? What are not? What are requirements? What are busing requirements? What is distance? There's a, there's a great deal of expertise that goes into making this decision. So these decisions are historically, and always, in my experience, been recommendations of the administration with input from staff. But ultimately, the board decides. It's ultimately the board's final decision, what to cut and what not to cut. What we did last time, the engagement with the community was determining, because we didn't bring everything back. We maintained cuts. And I think what this committee will find, or any committee, or anyone who goes through our books, or looks at our spending, will see that not only are we not frivolous in our spending, we're probably underspending, quite frankly. We're understaffed, and have been for, we've made massive cuts in 2012, and we've continued to make those. What, 10 secretaries we picked off through attrition over the last five or six years? Same with custodians, teachers. Teachers teach six periods, now not five. We cut 50 teachers. I mean, there's been significant reductions in force. And I, I would submit to you that we cannot cut $5 million out of the budget without radically changing course offerings. That's all that's left. So I don't know that, I think that would be difficult for anyone outside of administration to even begin to wrap their head around that process and, and know how to do that. The contracts are complicated. You just don't cut who you want to cut. There's an entire process. So, you know, I, I do agree that community engagement's important, and, and that needs to be worked in this process. But I think it'll be difficult for them to do that on their own.
Well, they wouldn't be doing it on their own. Each meeting is going to have a subject matter expert who comes in and provides direction and scope, and we'll have to work closely together on it.
Who, I'm sorry, which, which subject matter experts?
So the proposal, as it was on May, what month is it? May? May 9th was that in the organizational meeting, the two-hour structure, the first portion would be to stand up the committee, provide orientation essentially to the members, provide structure, framework, and the alike, which I've already discussed. And I already spoke with Ms. Mensah about that legal counsel would provide us guidance on ensuring that that is properly done, and in alignment with all the requirements. On top of that, we would invite initially, ultimately, this has to do with dollars and cents. So we would give the floor to Mr. Tarnello, and he would be provided the opportunity to provide direction to the committee. These are the areas where we look. This is, these are the areas where you can look. This is where you should probably start. And allow them an opportunity to ask questions. But the guidance is gonna be from the administration, from the subject matter experts. Nick, I'm sure you've already started looking at and considering, and kind of have a frame of reference of where we're going trajectory-wise. So that's where, as committee chairs, Stacy and I would work to ensure that he's ready and prepared, so that, those members leave with direction, structure, and information. And then if you put. And then it'd be put back on us as co-chairs to, once again, keep forging forward appropriately and keeping them on scope. And it'll be a little bit of work, but it is what it is. And then the next meeting would be the administration. So Nick, you've already, would have had an opportunity to provide scope on where to look and where to focus and what things are legitimately capable of being considered financially. And then Steve, you would come into the next meeting, looking at operations, administration, and the like, and you're gonna be able to craft a message and provide direction and scope, and, once again, drive home what they can and can't look at. Everything you just said would be incorporated into those meetings. And we'll work closely with the administration prior to that organizational meeting to put forth a plan that allows for that to occur. It's not just gonna be thirty people in a room talking about what they want or don't want, that'll be embedded in the organizational meeting and the orientation documents, and essentially, I don't know what other word to say it, bylaws of the committee.
I know Krista and I did get feedback from the community, thank you for including us, this is, you know, great, thank you for coming up with a different idea, but we also, at least I think we need to think about what the staff and union think. Have you received any feedback from the staff or unions about the committee?
Yeah, I've been hit up by several staff members, I won't say that I've gone out and sought opinions and asked questions, so this is a small sampling, but I believe the nickname is Cut Squad by the staff for the, for this committee. And the fear of staff is that the message is, remember, seventy-five percent of the community doesn't have a child in school. So if you can cut five million dollars out of the budget, great, then we don't need to pass the levy. That's the fear, or the feedback that I've gotten from some staff members, sorry that my phone rang. So, you know, I, I, I don't wanna call on anybody and put them on the spot, but that's, that's the negative fear. Again, small sample size, small sample size without a lot of explanation, but.
Well, I think that's why Strategic Planning Committee was the name that was selected, because ultimately, this ties into our strategic plan and ultimately arriving at our goals. And one of the things that we discussed was committees before that potentially could engage the community, and one of the things that I've already discussed with legal counsel is that this Strategic Planning Committee would stand up and sit down for big organizational impact to the district. As of right now, the item that is large organizational impact is potential levy failure. But in the future, other things, if we rewind a bunch of years, maybe when you put together your committees for SOI, when pursuing that. Strategic Planning Committee in general is a committee that would engage, and these are parameters that we put into the bylaws, when large dollar items and/or large structural change would occur, we would already have resources to call on as needed, instead of having to form a future committee. So not only could it be used for this, but it'd have a more broader scope, and that is, the committee itself is brought together when large strategic organizational change is being considered by the board. And the board would decide if they wanted to enact that committee for that said situation or not. So it's, it just happens that this is where we're forming it, and that this is the largest issue that lays ahead of our district at this time.
The largest, the largest issue ahead of our district is passing the levy.
You're right, it is. But we can't do anything with the levy as board members, as a school district, we receive secondary guidance, we can put out other small tiny things, but we can't do the measures we did before.
We should push that envelope, because the Strategic Planning Committee was, well, what, if there's no levy outreach and no community trying to pass the levy, the Strategic Planning Committee is meaningless, because.
But the levy, the levy notification and the lobbying falls on the levy committee per state legislature guidance, we can't just disregard that.
So, so instead, we're going to take up administration time to, to tell what we can and can't cut? So these, how many committees are you guys on right now? More than one, two, three?
Well, we have a lot of committees that stand up and sit down.
Just sounds like another committee, and, and are these people? When the levy failed, one person spoke at the meeting the following Monday. You, are you saying that this group is gonna be in full force at every meeting, listening? Or, I, I just don't, I just don't see it. And if, and if the problem is, the levy committee, the board can't operate as a levy committee, and I get that, and Sugarbrook, I get all that stuff, but where are we standing with the Sugarbrook case? What can we, what are about the answers to the questions? We should be, we have a levy to put on the ballot in November, are we putting one or two on? Why don't we have this committee after the levy fails in November, and then we can figure out what to cut?
We can't do that then, we have to make notifications. Per collective bargaining agreement, don't we have notification timelines for RIFs?
Well, you, once the school year starts, because it's a mid, mid-year, we, kids' schedules are built, et cetera, et cetera, we can't go into any significant RIF until the summer, the summer of?
A year from now.
A year from now. The year, a year from now is when we would go into RIFs, we couldn't go into RIFs in November. I mean, we, you, you could make, what you could do is what we did when our previous levy failed, you could go into athletic cuts, ban cuts, extracurricular cuts.
Can't even do busing cuts.
You can't do busing cuts once you start the school year either, it's illegal. So you're, you're pretty hamstrung to, to make cuts, but I, but I, I think what, one of the messages I don't want to get lost and really doesn't speak to or pro or, or, or against this committee, but I think it's really important, I, what we have to get out is the importance of what a critical juncture we're at. If we failed this levy in November, it's, we're on a fast track to state receivership and destruction of this school district. We would have to come back in May with a, with a renewal, a new money levy, follow that with a renewal, follow that with a renewal. And if we failed two renewals in a row, what on earth would make us think that we could pass a new money levy with a renewal simultaneously? And oh, by the way, that same dollar amount will cost the community twelve and a half percent more, because the rollback's gone.
Yep.
So, you know, I, you know, I would like to know, you know, I would like to know who our levy committee is and when they're meeting and they should be meeting, and they, they have no money, they need to be fundraising. I'm very concerned that, as far as I know, once again, we have no movement on our levy committee, I think there is a solution to that, but as it currently stands, if there's, if there's movement being made, I'm unaware of it. And that concerns me regardless of this committee or not this committee.
So when you say there's a solution, what's the solution?
I believe that this board should ask Catherine Beal to run the levy, and she's willing to do it.
But Catherine Beal is an employee of the district.
She is an employee, but she has a defined start and stop of her school day, where I do not. And that's the difference in Sugarbrook. And I would submit to you that even this committee is making, what's the, why are we making, and, and I do believe we should, but I'm just asking the question, what's the purpose of making sure we have the cuts understood by, by September?
That was the guidance you provided me when we spoke before putting together the proposal, you had said that September was the timeframe that you advised.
I agree, I agree, that is critical, it, it is a fact, but I don't know how, but what would the state attorney general say is the purpose of putting a notice of levy cuts out in September? What would he say is the purpose of that?
Well, then, information that was provided to me by you in our conversation was, we need to provide notice to them in October so that the voters would know what they were voting for.
Agreed, and I, I stick by that, that is factual, and I get what you're trying to do, I don't disagree with what you're trying to do, fundamentally, I don't disagree with it at all. I'm, what, the point, I guess I'm trying to make, and I'm not being very clear about making, is I believe the state attorney general would say that the purpose of putting that, that information out is to influence the passage of the November levy. So I would tell you that, that's, that's, the board's already walking in, in this, that risky, unknown gray area. By running this, the same as they would a levy committee.
In the documentation provided by legal, they specifically state that districts are allowed to communicate what the impact of a failure of a levy would be.
Right.
Which is, what would occur is that we would take recommendation from the committee, and then obviously, at the same time, recommendation from the administration, and then the board ultimately has a decision to make regardless of either recommendation, correct? On what the, what would occur, so when, if the levy failed in November, which I truly hope it doesn't, but if it were to, we would have to make, we'd have to take action, we'd have to have conversations and take action, correct? Regardless, if the committee, if none of this happened, there'd still have to be a conversation in November. And I actually went out and researched, we have previously put out and documented what those cuts were in advance of the levy.
Always.
And I did double and triple check the legal documentation provided by counsel from auditor Faber stating that that was appropriate information. So I'm, I guess, why are we in a gray area then? What am I missing?
I, it's the same question I had previously, would that, would Faber consider that, and perhaps not, perhaps you're correct, but would Faber consider that as an effort to influence the passage of the levy? That's kind, that's the feedback we got from legal counsel.
Well, can we, can we pull up the, the information right now? We all have our computers out, we have the information from legal counsel in our email. I believe in the approved information, it stated that items to be, cuts that would result from a failure of a levy were appropriate from both councils that we sought information from.
Okay, I trust you.
Okay, so that, so the, so the Strategic Committee is going to identify those cuts that would be cut and communicate those by September in the event the levy fails?
They would make a recommendation for the board to consider in October, which would be the same timeframe.
Per Dr. Thompson, you had told me in October, we would discuss those, correct?
So, so under normal circumstances, let's say this was just normal, you know, we didn't have all this craziness with the state attorney general. Historically, what would happen is the administration would make a plan in collaboration with the board, always the doomsday scenario, right? What would we do moving forward? So that would entail coming back in May with levy decisions and cuts, because the, the double-edged sword about cuts when you're campaigning is, on one hand, when you say these are the things that are gonna get cut if the levy fails, one reaction from the community is you're threatening us, et cetera, et cetera, that's one reaction. The secondary reaction to that is, if you don't put that information out, and then you make those cuts, and middle school basketball's gone now, people go, people get really upset because they say, what? You didn't inform us about what was going to be cut. So I, I, I believe you're absolutely on point that we have to be able to state, maybe not everything specifically, but pretty decent generality, a pretty close, pretty close. This is, this is what's at stake if the levy were to fail. That's, but that's just one piece of
Yeah.
the overall levy campaign, it's not the entire strategy, it's a piece of.
So Lawrence made mention of pushing the envelope with the levy a little bit. If the board is not doing anything criminal, like using public funds to do anything with the lobby, and we just help with it, what could be done to a board member? We don't have a license, they, they could pull your license, Dr. Thompson, but if we don't do anything criminal, what could they charge us with? Do you know that?
I, I don't believe it, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so start there. I don't believe that it would result in any kind of charge. Worst-case scenario, and I've not seen it happen, but it doesn't mean it couldn't, worst-case scenario would be, they could challenge, let's say the levy passed, they could challenge the past levy, that's possible. Probably not super likely, the, the, the real essence of Bell Brook is?
They did criminal.
Yeah, they did, they did, they did things we've never done, ever, even in our, in our previous interpretation of the law. We've always known, you can't work during the school day, you can't use school computers, printers, et cetera, et cetera, you can't use, can't use taxpayer funds, and, and we've never done that. What we have done is, myself, sometimes the treasurer, certainly much more with Nick, because Nick is a, a very good public speaker as well, which would, would help a lot, because I could split up the presentations, but I have historically led those presentations, and then the levy committee's doing all kinds of work behind the scenes. Essentially, I get a schedule and I'm told what to do, and I go where they tell me to go, and I present where they tell me to present, I make the presentations, but that was okay, because it was always in the evening, until Faber's interpretation is, we've discussed previously, superintendent's never off the clock, so therefore, he's interpreting that as a gray area, not, you, that, and legal counsel's saying until it's better understood, they're advising treasurers and superintendents not to do that.
Let me jump in real quick.
Go ahead.
Deputy Auditor Bob Hinkel, the reason that the levy don't, is not published yet, is because of the very things Steve just mentioned, they're trying to define what a superintendent and treasurer and board members are off the clock. So that's what they're trying to define right now. Maybe it's gonna be defined a week, or two weeks, or three weeks, I don't know, but that's what they're working on. So we're definitely gonna have guidance, you know, within a month.
Well, no, we've been hearing that since January, I mean, to be honest, we've been here, and the case goes back to April nineteenth of twenty nineteen, with a second iteration in February of twenty twenty, with an additional iteration, iteration in November of twenty twenty-one, and then another one in twenty-two, they just keep saying, we'll get it to you, we'll get it to you, it's not coming.
I don't think they plan to.
Well, is our, so then, is our current posture then, I know that we're bleeding into the other levy discussions, but their current posture not, you guys aren't, I mean, not on the spot, but are we gonna, you're not gonna be the mouthpiece for the November levy in some form or fashion? We're not gonna use any school resources to cut out anything?
We definitely can't use school resources, yeah, you never, never.
No, like check in with the soup, hey, there's a, there's a, there's a ballot initiative and explaining what's on, like the old days when?
Well, we do have some additional guidance from our second attorney that we've not necessarily had a chance to digest, and he points out many things that I think goes to your point, Lawrence, where is that wiggle room? And what's the evidence to support that? And they provided us some statutes and revised codes that says, hey, you know, this is a gray area, however, this protects you.
I haven't got that either.
Pretty sure, there's been a lot of emails.
The second.
There's a lot of emails.
I've heard about it, I just haven't seen it yet, had a chance to read it.
Scott was supposed to send it to you.
I don't think he ever got it.
Alright, cause he sent it out to us, cause it was after our conversation. So we'll make sure we get that over.
Perhaps a work session with him might be advisable, or just invite, just, I, I, I just, right now, as far as the levy goes, I would love to be able to be told, Steve, you can fundraise. I, I, I know how much money we need, I, I think we need about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars and, to run an effective levy campaign, and I know exactly where I can get it, I just need to make the phone calls. And it's, I've always done it historically, it's legal, or at least it always was.
I just, I'm, I'm concerned, we already have a district of, or a community, a portion, and I don't, I don't, I can't quantify what percentage that portion is, that says that we willy-nilly misspend money, and to make decisions and choices that could result in long-tailed litigation could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and be all for naught. And I am, once again, I wanna point out, I specifically called a meeting, I let everybody know about this, in March, with our legal counsel, with Catherine Beal, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Charnello, and I spent an hour raking the attorney over the coals, trying to find ways, and it was unilaterally agreed upon by Nick, Mrs. Beal, and Dr. ways, and it was unilaterally agreed upon by Nick, Mrs. Beal, and Dr. Thompson, that we were not able to do anything. And being a board member who respects and trusts the administration, as we have tried to build a, I think, a rather trustful relationship, I asked the attorney to provide evidence of it, and it was distributed. It wasn't until after the levy failure that I received communication from other board members, saying there has got to be something we can do, and I immediately sought out additional communications to get a second opinion from other legal counsel. And that was basically the same, but slightly different. Obviously, I'm only one of five, and if the decision of the board is to move ahead and push the envelope and find ways to do that, I want this levy to pass. I have three children in the district who will have consequences to their education. So I'm here trying to do what I know I legally can, and that is, form a committee, include community, give them a voice, because they spoke. Now, I cannot, nor can we control a political action group that is outside of our purview and scope. And the leadership committee that was on that before stepped down in writing in January, and we're forging ahead, and that, I'm sorry, Dr. Thompson?
They, they actually stepped down well before that.
Well, we received communication even before we were sworn in as board members. On, it was January 3rd, we weren't sworn in until the 10th, although we took office on the 1st. We're doing the best that we can in unsure times. And the community is saying they want to be heard, and it, it doesn't hurt to take their opinions or give them opportunity to see and hear and contribute, I don't-
For what?
The, the feedback I received was mixed, although slightly, it was slightly in favor of the Strategic Planning Committee. The negative side was that the perception of the intent of the committee, as you mentioned, it earned a nickname, but, so they, they indicated that they thought it would be difficult to effectively communicate the purpose of the committee, and, and to communicate that, I guess, effectively throughout the community. On the other side, people thought that it would show community members how efficiently the district is run-
Yes.
And they would realize that there's very little that can be cut.
I think that's, that's the spirit where I'm coming from, is, I, I say this with absolute truth, we as board members and administrators should not be afraid to open up our books and sit down with our community. It is their money that we are collecting, and to allow them in to see and hear and discuss, yes, there's going to be a lot of questions, and yes, they're not going to fully understand it, however, they deserve the opportunity.
But they have the opportunity. There's six people in this room. How many video tubers are going to watch this? Another committee, well, I hope you, I hope I'm wrong, and I hope, like I said, I'll assume positive intent, but if there's that much energy, where are the people? And, and the people that run this business are sitting right there, they know the ins and outs-
Yes.
And our books are good, and we get awards with distinction, and soy's kicking butt, and pace is on its way, all this stuff. You could, a, a committee of laypeople, I don't believe, I hope I'm wrong, but it's all here.
I wouldn't say they're laypeople, we have members of the Northeast Ohio ESC, we have five employees, we have therapists, we have people who work in education and with children, we have individuals who have their PhD that are marketing and strategic planners with large organizations.
That are going to sit out in a room and figure out what to cut, and these guys are going to give you the, the, the bandwidth of what you can and can't cut. I think that's, if that's within the parameters of what we're allowed to do as a board, then that's great, but that is awful. And November's levy is going to fail, absolutely is going to fail. One ballot, two ballots, without energy, and a levy committee chairman, and I know who that is right now, and he's trying to do his best, I know Catherine Beal has done this time and time again, I know she knows how to do this business on her own time, in the, in the purview of the canoe rules, she can do it, but right now, I just don't see it, I'm trying, I'm trying to get my arms around it, I hope it really works, but some of these people on this list should be on the levy committee.
There's nothing that says they can't.
We should be banging the door down for, for funding, we should be asking the union reps for, 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 for financial assistance, everyone should throw in the pot, we need to go, we need to pass this levy, not try to figure out ways, another way for the community to figure out what they can cut. I just don't see it, I just don't see it. But I, but I voted medium for this last Monday, but I hope it is, I hope, I hope it works.
Mrs. Menzer is the co-chair, what are your thoughts?
I mean, as a co-chair, I agreed to be on this committee, but I see valid points from the other side as well, and it's a little concerning.
What's concerning?
Lawrence's points of how it's going to be construed, and maybe some of these people should focus energy on the levy committee instead of cuts.
We could always-
Maybe they don't want to do both, maybe they don't have the time or the energy to do that.
We could amend the size of the committee to be less, I mean, there's forty applicants.
Could you take half of them and say, you guys go strategic, the rest of you go talk to Nick Brown?
You, Lawrence, I would be the first person, like, helping forge that way, if we could. But that's the thing, is, these individuals have already been, I want you to think about this for a minute. When was the last time we had forty individuals directly engage the board from the community? Oh, yeah, besides, besides-
Besides all the emails that come in.
Our, our last Strategic Planning Committee that made our current strategic plan had-
Probably forty-five, yeah.
So here's our new Strategic Planning Committee, and we have engaged people, and we want, we should use their energy, they want to help the district, they want to be a part of it. And once again, there's, they can join anything else they want to. We could always amend the size, I just, we have, we have their engagement, why would we not want to continue with their engagement?
Because I think that they think they're on the levy committee.
It was very clearly communicated.
I still think they think they're on the levy committee, would be my guess.
Well then, in the organizational meeting, we make that clear, and if people want to withdraw, they can.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, they can.
And then call Nick Brown, because he needs levy committee.
So what we need is-
Call Catherine Beal, she needs levy committee members.
That meeting would be open to the public, there'd be nothing said against having that person there, if and when needed.
Yeah.
Could I offer a potential compromise? I understand, I do also see both sides, I do see the value in engaging the community, letting that, and I think that's the positivity that you're hearing, is based on what they understand, this is their opportunity to have a voice. And I think that's smart, I think that's important. But I, my concern is that they don't have the knowledge, the expertise, nor is it their responsibility to make these incredibly difficult decisions, and they could have a PhD, and they could be the executive of Amazon. Jeff Bezos doesn't understand how schools are funded. He, he's a brilliant man, but-
Steve, I'll be honest, I don't either.
Right.
And I'm a board member who will make decisions, and all, we are educated and provided opportunity to ask questions, to become informed, to the extent that we can.
But those, but those are historically coming from the administration that you employ-
Yeah.
Who are the subject matter experts, to give you those recommendations and then fill in the holes for you. For example, there's something as basic and simple as House Bill 920, this committee isn't going to understand, the majority of them is not going to even begin to understand what that is, they don't, and without even, that's the baseline, most important piece to understand, to wrap your head around why schools are always on the ballot, to begin with. But I still think this committee has great purpose. I would just recommend that their number of meetings is, I don't know what it's at right now, but-
Five.
That the administrative team puts together some options and explanations, puts it together, formulates it, and then we can go and have conversations with this committee to get their feedback about what they think their priorities are, and where they want to go. And then I think there's also an opportunity there, that I think you guys mentioned, that, and we've offered it before, we've offered it to the community to say, come in and meet with our treasurer, the books are open, we will have a session for you to go through all of our finances, top to bottom, but no one ever takes us up on it, no one ever has. But maybe this committee is a captive audience, where Nick could take some time to go through that, because what they're, what they're going to find, and that is positive, is, whoa, hell, where do we begin to cut?
Absolutely.
There's nothing to cut, unless you want to say, you know, well, well, we're gonna, we already have a study that tells us, we're significantly understaffed administratively. I have less, I have less central office staff members here than I did when I was the superintendent in Chagrin Falls, they have eighteen hundred kids. Different community, I understand, but operationally, this is far more complex than that school district of four buildings. So I, I think, again, I think there's some positivity that could come out, I would just, but just to, just to have Nick come in and make one presentation, and have me come in and make one presentation-
But is that a-
I'm having a hard time understanding how that committee's going to move forward with really, really difficult decisions, and these decisions are, let me, you lose sleep over them, they're horrible, you're, you're negatively impacting kids, you're, sit down with a group of secretaries and tell them we're going to cut ten, that's a lot of fun, isn't it, Nancy?
I can't, I would tell you, I can't go through it again.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's just not the responsibility, I want to engage them, just like we engage them about what to bring back, but even that, you have to be a little bit, for example, if you were to ask the teachers in the community right now if mental health would be a high or a low priority, where would staff say it is?
High.
Incredibly high. Staff would probably say it's number one. I don't know where the community would go, but my guess is it would be high. But when we talked about what we were going to bring back in surveys, when we finally passed the levy, if you recall, we had hundreds of people upstairs, in four different meetings, guess where mental health services fell? Last. And why is that? Because they're looking at their own kid, they were the parents that came and were engaged and active, they came, and they were much more concerned about seventh grade basketball, which I get, I understand that, or a choir concert, or whatever, they prioritize those things above, because only about ten percent of the kids get mental health services, but those ten percent of those kids disrupt the other ninety percent of the students, but they're not thinking like that, because they're not using that. And, and so those difficult decisions, it's good to get their opinion, it's good to engage them, it's, it's, it's good to hear their feedback, but, but some of these really difficult decisions have to be made by somebody, a lot of times it falls on the shoulders of the superintendent, that's the job, that's probably why I'm so revered and really liked throughout the community. And so, but I say that in jest, of course, but we've had to make a lot of very, very difficult decisions, that are controversial, like masks, and all kinds of things, and cuts, and the list goes on and on, and I think this committee can play a role and be a, a really great asset to us. But I would prefer, or recommend, that the administration goes through the process, and then we sit down with these folks over a few meetings, and present our ideas, and give them an opportunity to weigh in on what, where they would prioritize.
I think that's ultimately, that's legitimately where it was going.
It, well, it can't, it, it, what I was told was that I'm invited to one meeting, and Nick was told he was invited to one meeting, I don't know how we could accomplish that.
Those were ideas, which is why, at the beginning, as I said, before the organizational meeting, we would have to sit down with the administration and formulate a plan that would be presented to the committee at the organizational meeting, to ensure that the right information's being provided, with complete acknowledgement that that can't occur without our subject matter experts in those areas. And it's not firm yet, it was the idea of the committee, and we're still obviously massaging it out and figuring it out, and that's okay. I think, you know, you said something that was really interesting, and I wrote it down, and, and that is, you know, the scope, like, purpose, and that's something that must be constructed before that meeting, is, what is that purpose, what is its objective, what is its timeline? And that gets presented at the organizational meeting, and if the individuals on the committee are like, uh, then they don't want to be a part of it, then they can withdraw, that's not a big deal. But ultimately, and I, I'll say this, because we've had conversations, the administration has had committees where they just report out, and then nobody comes back. That was a concern that was expressed to us by our, by both of you, that when we have committees and we just report out, there's not engagement. And at our meeting on the 23rd, when we discuss committees in general, and I believe, Mr. Charnello, you had asked Mr. Foreman, who lovely comes to all of our meetings, you know, if you're going to form a committee, you have to listen to the committee, you can't just have them there to listen to you, or else it's disingenuous.
Agreed.
And those were things that we all agreed upon on the 23rd, these were conversations that we had, so with the spirit of those conversations, the idea of the committee was born. And it's, once again, understanding that they are not the decision makers, because they cannot be, but bringing in our administration and building a partnership is what the committee would need to be, and I'm very happy to sit down between now and the organizational meeting, and ensuring that you as our superintendent, and Mr. Charnello as our CFO, you see that this is going in a direction that is effective, that it is purposeful, and that it is worth everyone's time. And ultimately, you would not be discredited or discounted, you have to be a part of the process. So I think, I think maybe we just have different opinions of what the committee is, I, I feel the spirit is, we're looking for the same thing. I don't know.
I think after listening to all this, and the complexity, and the number of people that did apply, I think we should have been the number of people involved, I think it should be less, maybe fifteen, twenty, instead of thirty.
Okay.
That's just a large group to have people wrapping their head around too many, I think, after listening to our conversation, I think thirty is too many.
Okay, so what do you, what do you think?
Thirteen, twenty, maybe eighty.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Vittori, Mr. Oskus? It's too bad Mr. Boxer couldn't be here, because it would be good to have his feedback as well.
I think it would make sense to decrease the size. That's also something, I heard that thirty was quite a few people in order to really have an effective discussion, I guess, it's a little bit too big.
Well, our previous strategic, strategic planning committee was forty, forty-five, was it not?
It was.
So how was that managed? How did you find an effective way to build the, the five year strategic plan with that many people? Honestly, suggestions are absolutely welcome.
We did a, well, first of all, I give a lot of credit to Gina Kaverin, she's excellent at organizing, and she, she led a lot of that, so I give her all the credit. We had activities, we had stations, it's a-
Like subcommittees within the committee?
Breakout sections.
Yeah, we had breakout sessions, we had survey data, that, survey data really drove everything. You know, the two points that came out of surveys, if you recall, and they, and they drove our strategic plan significantly, was the desire for one-to-one and mental health services. That's, so we had those conversations, and then it came out and was verified through our survey, so we used a lot of different tools and techniques, but we were constantly breaking the groups up, into small groups, and rotating, and, so I think the number, numbers can be managed, it's, we're moving fast as we need to, and, and I recognize that. So I think the number, numbers can be managed, it's, we're moving fast as we need to and, and I recognize that.
I'm going to jump in real quick.
Go ahead, I need to stop.
All right, you go. Can we do thirty in the committee?
Yes.
Should we? Maybe not, just because to Lawrence's point, we're splitting resources. So, if you have forty people on this list and you take fifteen or twenty and then you take twenty-five or twen- twenty to twenty-five and put them, kind of push them over to the levy committee, that's probably a little bit better than maybe pushing ten when this is very critical. And we will talk about it more later on the meeting about, this isn't just one levy.
Yeah.
This is probably the future of the district. So, the more you can push over towards the levy committee and give them another platform to have their voice be heard and make an impact, I think that's a good thing. So to, you know, take your best and brightest, the most energetic people and put them in this committee would probably be a disservice to the district. So by splitting it at least fifty-fifty, I think is beneficial.
Assuming that they want to be on the levy committee.
I would like to clarify something and this is speaking to the community. I want to reiterate that this is the first time we've been able to discuss this since May ninth. There is no coercion or conversation. I think, I think you're seeing right now, this is how a board works when there's a little bit of, we not, we're not quite sure. And this is the way we're supposed to operate in open session, having these conversations. So, it was never the intent to, under false pretense, solicit the community to apply for a committee and then say, "Hey, by the way, FYI, oopsies, we were trying to get you on the levy committee", which in my opinion is what this kind of sounds like, I know it's not. But if I was listening at home, I'd be like, "Mm, I think, oh, again." Right, so, I think that's really important that that was never a discussion. In fact, this is the first that I've ever heard from anybody in this room that thirty was a too high of a number, which is okay. This is how we work and operate, we're going to figure it out, this is where we talk.
So, at the same time, this is not a committee per the charter, that if you read it narrowly, that says this is a group of people trying to figure out how to cut five percent out of the budget. That wasn't the intent of this committee either, right?
So, the committee, I wish I had my PowerPoint with me, was to evaluate the impact to the district's operations in the event, yep, it'll be right. Thank you. I know, I didn't, I couldn't print it bigger. Want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Younger than I am.
Okay. "To create a board-led, community-based committee and to empower the community to investigate and create recommendations that would be considered in the event of a failure, another levy failure in November." But, I'll get that back. What we do have to do prior to its first meeting is really clearly define what that is. And ultimately, we needed to get the approval from the board to move forward with the committee and then do what we're doing right now, is really like drill down what its purpose is and how it's going to operate. So, I think that's where maybe a lot of ambiguity was, is that we, we needed to talk out what it needed to be and we couldn't, outside of meetings, talk about it. Which makes it hard for us to collaborate together if, it can only be Stacy and I talking about things, we're excluding three, four, five other viewpoints. But that's by virtue of sunshine law, we have to exclude those voices because we can't have more than three. So, okay, so let me just, I've, I've written a few things down. But once again, going back to that previous point that we deviated from, the individuals who have applied are of their own free will, able to, if and as they deem appropriate, to seek out said levy committee and join as they decide appropriate. That is not something that we as board members can ask them to do when we are operating as a board. That would be them on their time. Because right now, our focus needs to be on the impact of finances in our community, the levy specifically, and, and the committee itself. Because we can't discuss the levy committee or participate in levy committee promotion while we are board members, as we are right now. That is a hard line, right? So, fifteen or twenty, so what?
It needs to be an even number, so we could split it between lottery.
Okay, so...
Sixteen or twenty.
Must be an even number for equal division. Not fifteen.
Is your, is your plan to, to, what is, what's the end goal of this, this bullet item forty?
So, that one would be-
Do you actually do the lottery today?
To actually do the lottery, we have it poised and set up already.
Oh, really?
And it'll poll, it'll poll fifteen names for us.
And we're going to stay at fifteen and then the other fifteen, at least the initial plan was, the other fifteen would be invites to balance the committee, was that, or did that change?
No, that is exactly what it was, like-
Now we need to lower.
Yeah, so if you look at the, and I apologize, there was five people who had applied after I had had time to compose the spreadsheet. But as we can see, there is one city that is heavily weighted. So if by some random chance of drawing that that happened to be the entire group, that would be an issue. So... That's why we kind of decided that we would split it in half, so that half could be left to complete lottery chance and the other half would be to ensure that all voices are present on the committee to provide that balance. So, if we go down to sixteen people, that would mean only eight. I like the idea of keeping it equal though too, so that when we are in committee, if we divide into subcommittee, that would be more easily and equally divided. So, eight and eight. What are your thoughts?
I really do like the idea of going into subcommittees and perhaps having a subcommittee of people that are interested in, or you just almost straight out ask, how many of, is there eight that are particularly interested in learning if, if there's fat where it is? And let them work closely with Nick, let him go, let him eat the books up. Let those eight people come back out knowing-
And they can report out.
That's right.
That's essentially, so, I don't know if anybody's noticed, I like details. And I swear I would have given you a forty-seven slide PowerPoint had I felt it was appropriate with the presentation, but it was not.
And you would have started typing it at one o'clock in the morning.
I probably would have and I would have gotten it done on time. So, there's no rest for the weary. But ultimately, in the back of my head and what Stacy and I were going to do after tonight was sit down and once again, meet with you, subcommittees are an absolute necessity. Not everybody can work on one topic, it needs to be broken into multiple subtopics, reporting out and allowing them to drill down. But these are things that still need to be worked on. But first, we need committee members to then figure out how we can operate the committee if we don't know who's on the committee. So this is a process. And it's the first time, I think we're feeling it, this, the district has never done a board-led committee, Dr. Thompson, you had said in your tenure here.
No.
Okay, so we're figuring things out for the first time for this board, for future boards, for future board members and the community to set a precedent. And change is always hard and the first is always painful. But we're going to do it. Okay, so are we more comfortable then with sixteen total members? And then do eight in the lottery and then eight to balance?
Sounds good to me.
Y'all pick. You know where my committee would want to be, so...
I would be standing right next to you on that committee. I'd be putting signs on school property if I could, but there's a lot of regulations which we have to abide by now that we're board members. It was funny, I actually, and this was a side note, I had spoken to somebody who had reached out to ask questions and, and they said, "You know, I always considered that I might run for the board. However, I realize now that being on the board ties a noose around your neck and you can't do the things you'd want to do anymore because you're bound by a lot of restrictions and policies." And they're like, "As a private citizen, not on a board, I can do a whole lot more." I'm like, "Yes, yes you can." Rally some friends." You know, so... Okay. With regards to strategic planning committee discussion, are there any stones left unturned at this time?
God, I hope not.
I just want to make sure moving forward so that Ms. Menzer, Mrs. Menzer and I, because the work starts tomorrow. Ultimately, it is the will and the request of this board that we, once we have our members, we will immediately schedule meetings with the administration to... What's going on? He'll be back. And ultimately, we will work with the administration to design the flow of the committee meetings and then the organizational meeting invite would be sent out to the individuals who were selected in the lottery. Is that fair? Right, and then we'll work with Mr. Tarnello to identify ways within the purview of Open Meetings Act and sunshine law to ensure that we can communicate that back to the board. Mr. Tarnello, are you on board?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. I have no idea which item we're going to next, so...
I think the lottery.
The actual lottery. Let me turn back. Okay.
Sorry, Dave, we thought you were, you were going home early.
I actually thought that in the back of my head, like, wow, we totally overpromised and underdelivered for you. Okay, so, now we're moving on to item...
Four, four B.
The old four A.
Old four A, which is now four B. So that's Strategic Planning Committee Lottery. Now, for this, we just have to do the lottery. Okay. Okay.
I think it makes sure.
I want to find down to eight.
Million dollars.
Really? This is awesome. Can we get a little bit balls in it?
I was thinking names in a box, just first winner.
I'll change it to eight. All you have to do is hit.
I appreciate that, sir.
Give me a second till I get to speed up.
Should we wait for Lawrence or just go?
Is this on? Okay.
Good, Dave.
Dave, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, here we go. So, Jaclyn Mason. Patrick Ward. Tanya McDonald. Julie, Julie.
Osteck.
Osteck, I didn't want to, Jacob Rosatano? I don't want to butcher anybody's names. Alan Avery. Karen Agrich. Thomas Ott. Jennifer Dodd. And then everybody after is going to be placed on a, a waiting list. And these are the names in order in the event that those eight are unable to participate for some reason and/or they can still be considered in the other eight essentially. So it's going to go through, it's going to take a minute and it's going to put them in order for us. Now, the waitlist is not necessarily the next eight that we'll get on, okay? So we have to now look at those top eight, their demographic information, and then find an additional eight that applied that can balance that committee.
Can you scroll back up? I, there went too fast.
I, he's going to print it?
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we will get a written copy of this as soon as this process is complete. And we do have forty names. So, does it make sense, Dave, since it's just kind of going through the remaining of this? Should we just leave it on? Let it continue going, okay. So... Tanya. Jennifer Dodd. Jaclyn. Alan. And if you're looking for Jaclyn Mason, she was one of our five that was, at the end, that was late this evening.
Was Jennifer Dodd eight or nine?
She was nine.
She was nine.
She was waitlist one.
She's waitlist one.
She's waitlist one. Yeah, he said it's going to print out a list for us and we'll have a copy.
You weren't part of the proposal to be brought in in meeting four.
One, two, three, four, five, Julie. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we're almost there. Okay. So Dave will go ahead and grab that for us and then we'll look it over and take it from there. It seems to have stopped though. A waitlist thirty-two.
We're all forty.
Awesome, so we're good.
Eight plus thirty-two.